July seventeenth, twenty twenty four, it's four P M. And I'm calling this special city council budget workshop for the city. Um, city secretary, be federal, please.
Mayor DeFresco. Mayor Pretend them are highs here, council member Renee Beatty. Here, council member Chris Germer.
Here.
Council member Bob Mertes.
Here.
And council members Christian Richardson will not be here.
Well, we do have a forum. All right, so, um, purpose of meeting is obviously to work out the final details on the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. Um, we spent quite a bit of time looking at, but, uh, so we thought that the numbers would be thanks to, um, thanks to our diligent team of staff and council members. Um, so in the packet is the proposed budget that we agreed to at the last meeting that we signed up on. And said that we would, this is what we would be submitting with any additional edit. And so our, our, um, goal is to go back, take a look at this and especially see if there was anything that we could trim perhaps to, um, to clear up that twenty three thousand dollars deficit, if we can do that. Um, so, um, open the, open in the workshop for discussion.
Fast questions, have we, when it comes to adding lower taxes coming in, we?
I have some new information to offer all of, all of you all that might direct this conversation a little bit.
Sure.
Um, we have tax documents in our budget folder. I don't know if y'all have opened them and looked at them, but in them is important information from the county, which is where this came from. So if you're wondering, I didn't produce these numbers, this literally came from the county. Um, how you get some of these numbers is they produce those really handy tax note sheets that helps you calculate some of these things that maybe aren't directly in their file, which is this number. So it very much looks like by the end of this quarter, we will actually draw in more red tax revenue than we projected and anticipated additionally.
Do I have, do you have an estimate, because I do that seven hundred number.
You, okay, so this is the total, right? And then you take out our debt service, which was about three forty six. So that's the number you're ended up, you end up with. So let me give you that real fast, seven oh nine, and this is a rough estimate, right? There's forty six, so we ended up with roughly six hundred, sorry, three thousands. Why can I not say this out loud right now? Three hundred and sixty three thousand estimated in income, if that makes sense.
Right.
So, um, of that revenue, right? And then, so we're projecting.
Three six five.
Three six five, and this might be fairly spot on, uh, but if you'll notice, our, um, I'm sorry, I'm getting lost, I need to look at my computer, I can't look at those. Uh, if you'll notice that our property value has gone up. And so this right here, this is the certified property value. This is what, um, they're gonna project as our taxable. When you're looking at the new revenue rate, you, the calculation per the Hayes County website is that number minus the new bills. And so this is our no new revenue M and O rate. I'm trying to work on the debt service rate because I just got that payment in front of me here. Um, and then there's the M and O voter approval rate. So that no new revenue rate, what that would do is basically bring in the same amount of money. So you can kind of estimate what that would look like when you do the math here. And for some reason, let's see if it's working for me now. Earlier formulas weren't working for me, I don't know why. I take this number, I divide it by a hundred, and then I multiply all of this by, I think, no, I see it's not working for me, so I don't, anyway, I mean, I'll do it on my calculator, but that might, where I'm going to follow this is we have a better idea of what our actual income might actually be, and that maybe will put us in a better spot than we anticipated. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I'm working on the, the debt service calculation in this right here, and so I can give that to y'all. But if y'all did want to go item by item in the meantime, and just talk about it, make notes, don't let me stop you. And then when I get that new number, I'll be able to throw it in here.
Well, because part of the reason I asked was if the mayor had mentioned, you know, we can cut, but it could also be that, well, if we're adjusting.
We can adjust, oh, yeah, income.
Then we're gonna have to cut, so.
Yeah, couple, this is the thing goal.
Yeah.
We want, we want to turn that ready around.
Yeah.
And that can come from income or from training expenses. The one thing I did get from, um, from, uh, civic engaged, civic plus civic engaged was their, their actual number, so that's on, on, uh, page two of the budget, page four of the packet. Um, we had for website forty five hundred dollars, that's going to come out to be forty six hundred, forty five dollars and forty six cents.
So website was forty five dollars more. So forty six, five.
Four six, four five, four six. Or we could just call it forty seven, or we could call it five thousand, figuring that we're gonna have to go back in and maybe get a little training or something better, but forty to forty five, forty six.
Um, what we place safe and do forty seven then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were the other, any other totals that you?
No, we'd already gotten the, we'd already gotten the fund view amount. Um, you know, we don't, uh, we didn't anticipate any other, um, any other big changes in contractual services, um, so we're, we're pretty much locked down on those. But we did have, you know, big changes in the fund view and the website, just that we had ramp up charges this year that will not be there next year. So we saved some money on there, so that was.
And that's the one where we're saving money over all their initial expense, but for years future, we'll always be saving money.
Right. You know, we had a discussion last time about matching grants and took it from forty five thousand to twenty thousand. And I got thinking, you don't even have any matching grants on the horizon right now. But if we did, we could move money from reserves back into the budget for matching grants at any time, which would, at this point, save us twenty thousand dollars.
Oh.
The, the ones that we've got, sources aside, we had, um, you know, possible grant with, uh, restrooms for Creekside, we had possible grant for water harvesting, rainwater harvesting um, throughout, so those were grants that we were gonna apply for. Um, but again.
Yes, it needs to move back.
You can, you can put it in the budget, you know you're gonna do it, or you can take it out of reserves when you know you need it.
Yep.
But, um, that would take us down to three thousand dollars. Or, you know, for transparency's sake, it might be that, I mean, to take it out of the matching grant funds under total miscellaneous and put it back in the, on the back page, on the, um, take the spend with it and put, um, put grant, um, matching grant funds under expenses on the capital improvement projects.
Okay, you'd say that again.
Uh, well, so on the, on, on page seven of the packet, or, um.
Six and.
On the gray in front of you now.
Yeah, so, so we could say grant match is twenty grand there and take it out here, so that, that takes the proposed budget. Um, you know, much more manageable, um, and again, you know, it's like, oh, the, the thing, the thing with those, the thing with those um, capital improvement projects and, and sort of the, the yellow items, the ivory, uh, what color is that? Um, anyway, that, that is, all of those things are, um, when we do that, it's gonna come from grants or reserves or something, right? So these are not, these are not, uh, specifically budgeted items. Deerfield, when that happens, will, um, almost certainly will come out of, will rope on, go bond, um, city hall renovation, if we, if we pull that off, you know, it could be partially grant, I mean, the, I'll build this with a grant.
The L C R A specifically.
Yeah.
Whoever talks about it.
Yeah, so, um, the Creekside bathroom, there was, we had a grant for, for that. The, um, I did get, by the way, I did get just today from, um, Freeman Turks, the packet for, um, the big packet. So.
Itemized.
Things, though I've not had a chance to review it, but we'll share that. I mean, he just said, he said.
That's some hours ago, yeah.
You and me and, um, there's somebody on, on, on Tom's staff, but we do have those, we do have that now, so we'll be able to get a better sign, a better handle on, on what that's gonna be. Um, and, and in the, the comfort of my own home, I was looking at things a little more closely in terms of landscape maintenance, green space maintenance, and what is landscape maintenance? What is green space maintenance? Well, we talked about that in the last workshop, and I was like, why, why, why isn't this all just, we're all under, why isn't mowing and landscape maintenance and green space maintenance all, you know, in, in one, like one bucket? Um, and there were, there were, there was a discussion around that, that said there are different things. So green space maintenance, you know, is different from general landscape maintenance. Um, but I really don't understand why we would have been, and, you know, Jim may have an opinion on this, but I really don't understand why we have mowing and landscape maintenance, because it's all, it's all one bucket, so.
And it will be discretionary, whoever codes it, say, well, this seems a little bit like that, that we could simplify the coding.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that drives me nuts is that, you know, is, is like when we go through and look at how things have been coded in the past, and the same basic thing is coded here one time and here another time, you know, if we could, if we could streamline the chart of accounts, it's a tiny bit, so it's clear that, okay, this was a landscape company, go with those here.
So how about we green space and landscape maintenance merge it to be like planting? Because that's how I understood, like, no?
Landscape maintenance isn't, I mean, green space, I mean, it's not planting, I mean, planting is one part of landscape maintenance. You know, weeding, mowing, um, per loy, whatever, whatever we have to do, that's all part of landscape maintenance, right?
Important landscape, it's a big category.
Yeah, well, we just call it.
Others.
So you're saying mowing.
Is that your landscape maintenance?
Because landscape maintenance, you would think that includes mowing, weeding, planting. I mean, if you're a landscaper, you know, what do you do, right?
So we just merge that whole group together?
Yeah, nobody has any objection, we should be able to do that. I mean, it doesn't change, it doesn't change the, the, the total.
But it might help.
But it makes it easier to code it.
Yeah.
The question I have is exactly what is, where do we use this landscape maintenance money specifically within the city? Where do we use the green space maintenance specifically in the city? If I have these questions, others would too. Yeah, so, so, you know, we, we have a, basically a monthly service, you know, for, you know, mowing park spaces, mowing, um, mowing the, the three islands and, and then part of their contract is they come in periodically and do some, some bed cleaning and, and stuff like that. So what I don't fully understand, basically, so they can help answer this, is the difference between those kinds of things of landscape maintenance and mowing and what green space maintenance is.
Well, so for me, I'm sorry, but we, green space, like Parview, we installed, um, parking spaces with the park around the edges. You know, those aren't necessarily landscaping, it's, and there might be maintenance involved.
So it's more of a beautification thing?
Yeah, so in our, currently, the way things are zoned, we have parks, parks have their own maintenance budget, and then we have green spaces, which are not zone parks, but are city-owned green spaces, there's a better, like all the street trees, all the little islands. And so they don't, they didn't, you know, they have their own maintenance budget because that wouldn't come out of parks. The only thing that happens at both locations is the mowing, so that's probably why you have three different categories. Also, typically, landscape maintenance, depending on what it is, could be done by a mowing company, or maybe the same company does both of those, but they don't necessarily do like landscape design, installation, those kind of things. Could potentially be a different company or a different budget.
Tree trimming would.
Should never ever be done by anyone for the city other than certified owners.
But it wouldn't, there's nothing.
But, yeah, yeah. Um, and last year, we had green space maintenance seventy five hundred, landscape maintenance seventy five hundred. But in our actual cost to date, we had four thousand for green space and eleven thousand, six hundred for landscape. So it does seem like that landscape maintenance would be the, the category that most often coded. And so.
So also based on those numbers of last year, they have roughly fifteen thousand.
And that's what we budgeted.
Yeah, but now we're moving to ten.
Okay. Well, try to, David, okay.
Well, I mean.
It's a bit more that's.
I mean, if it was actually, we spent, but again, we go, you know, without all the detail of the coding, some of that might have been new like our view, like maybe some of that fell into that, which was a one-time event.
Well, tree trimming, we had five thousand, and we, um, budgeted ten thousand this year, so we haven't spent any in that category.
That's because we're gonna, we're planning on doing the full on.
And mowing, we, and we budgeted six thousand, we have zero coded to that. So we have fifteen thousand, twenty one thousand budgeted last year. Okay, and fifteen thousand spent so far. So what?
So tree trimming, we're definitely gonna keep that as a separate line item because that's different.
All right.
But if we were to add up mowing, green space and landscape and put it under a landscape, based on adding those three from last year, what's that number?
Oh, it's a question, I'm sorry. I was, I was doing math.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
She has the numbers here.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think we.
Mowing.
Okay, mowing.
Well, we actually spent zero last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing got, nothing got.
Green space was.
Totally did that.
We, or it's, or something.
Forty one hundred.
And then eleven for.
Eleven, six hundred, so.
So just say fifteen.
Yeah, okay.
So why don't we take those cross out, green space and mowing, and just bump up landscaping to fifteen?
Well, then we said that green space maintenance had more to be like with beautification project.
Well, but according.
And then where are we taking like Parview out of?
Yeah, and, yeah. But when we coded it last year, we just coded exactly equal to landscape.
Yeah, and if you look at, if you look at, you know, actuals, if you, if you took just landscape maintenance and mowing, um, we're at the number, it would combine those two, two figures because there's nothing coded up in mowing, and there's, and landscape maintenance is over by four thousand. You know, so we're, we're actually, if you, it, it's pretty apparent that, that Kevin was coding anything that came in from the landscape company, not to mowing, but to landscape maintenance. So mowing, I think, can clearly be taxed.
Yes.
Yes, you know, and combined into, into landscape maintenance.
Parks and playground, we budgeted five thousand, spent one five hundred.
That's gotta be a coding thing because, but the plan of the maintenance was once the playground's installed, there's certain things like, oh, we gotta re, like every nine years or something, we have to go refresh the ground.
Yeah.
You know, Thursday.
So you're making some of that sinking fund by doing it this way? By saying, if you're gonna put so much in here, we're gonna save some of it from year to year, but so that.
We're not, that's unfortunately, we're not doing that. We're, you know, Lydia has that great idea, we need to start creating some kind of sinking fund, but what we usually do is just start from scratch.
Yeah, you know, it's, in, in my thinking, it's kind of hard, I mean, you can do sinking funds.
It's not, I don't know how.
You know, it's, it's, technically, it's, it's technically tough because if, if you think about how we try to budget, it's zero-based budgeting. You know, so if you start from zero every year, then you don't have any carryover, you know, so then it's not like, like you don't have that sinking fund, so. Unless it's a fund setup, you know, so, sort of like we've done with the tree fund and parks fund, where donations have been made, you know, then, you know, you can set up separate accounting for it that way and, and put the money in there. But, but again, you know, if you, if you, if you, if you, the, the cheat on it or the hack on it, let's say we have five thousand dollars, we want to spend on something, we don't spend it, but we, but it hasn't gone away, we, we still, we're trying to, you know, put money aside for that, well, next budget, but it'd make me ten thousand. You know, and then the next year, but it, that, that makes sense, you might get fifteen thousand, but that's still a hack, I mean, it's not really.
But it's also, you know, there's turnover on council, and, you know, it's hard to communicate that kind of.
Oh, it's, no, it's very. And like, you've got the, I mean, you've got the notes in the budget, the fund duty, you put all those notes in it, but, but it's plain what it do it.
We would have to pass by, I'm guessing, resolution, the creation of additional funds in our um, fund-based accounting, and then by resolution, it would outline a portion of unused funds every year to sink into that. And how that works is those fund balance accounts cannot be used for other things, so it does present it in longevity for future councils, and that's how comp plans work, which is supposed to create those fund balances to match projects outlined in the comp plan, and that's how we do sort of commit future councils to stick to the long-term city plan without that zero budget issue every year, where if we get an off year where you don't have support on something that we've been budgeting for, for five years, it doesn't topple that progress, right? They can't, it would be very difficult to undo all of that, right? Um, that's how you set it up, we just have yet to have any action on that, we've talked about it for three years now. For streets, being one of them, the street maintenance, park, our land acquisitions specifically for what, for the city, was the other major one we've talked about. Um, and then.
Trails.
Yeah, we don't really have a bunch of pool from for walking trails, but we are pretty clear, we do intend to actually pursue walking trails once we understand what that looks like, right? Because that's what council's sort of committed to in this budget, is starting to really do the, the labor to understand what walking trails would mean for the city, right? Because we've never done those studies. Um, you know, after that, if we saw what that was gonna cost, we could set up a sinking fund and pick an account, an account for it to draw from. It could be multiple accounts too, it doesn't have to be one. I would, without doing much research, I would recommend that they be directly related services, if that makes sense. I don't know that it would be appropriate for us to pull, like, unused staff money or, you know, something like that, but.
Well, that will also help with budget creation in the future, once you know, oh, we, there's a sinking fund for this project, we should at least put in our zero budgeting another line there for something so that if we don't use it, it goes over there.
And so that would be for our fund balance loss.
Correct.
And that, that actual piece can be called something like the sinking fund constitution. If it's not used that year, it's. We, we, we kind of do that, it's not really a sinking fund, but like, we've been carrying that four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars in the drainage. That was originally, you know, our money, you know, Kevin said, hey, you know what? Because of our size and everything, we could use it for anything we want, but we're gonna earmark it for drainage.
Yeah.
Because it stayed earmarked drainage, even though it's, you know, it could be used for other things, right?
So.
All right, I have some exciting information on the screen for everyone.
Before we go off to another topic, we can ask another question, please. Um, Deborah, on the, on your research regarding the sinking fund, the creation of it, do we have to create it before we adopt the budget?
No.
For that budget?
I mean, no.
It would, it would be, you know, it's a, it's a forthcoming resolution, but it's not.
Well, I'm working on the fund balance.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not, we're not budgeting for it today. You know, it's part of our proposed budget, but, I mean, it's not necessary for, for both budgets, but it is necessary for our future.
All right, cool, so math is in, um, hopefully you understand this chart, if you don't, please do not hesitate to speak up. I'd rather you understand, and I'll take a minute, but essentially, here's our new revenue rate based on the certified property tax value, this is what, what we would bring in, I would map essentially what we brought in last year. Here is the rate we are currently sitting at based on what our current budget, um, amount, it's three sixty five, right? Obviously, it's a little off, we could tweak this to get exact, but I would recommend just making our budget look like this, that's a lot easier than backwards mapping by nine hundred decimal points, but I can do that if that's what y'all want. Um, this one is the other thing to consider, this is the highest rate we could possibly go to, notice it's still less than last year, but it would draw in more income, and we wouldn't be sitting here trying to squeeze a dry lemon. Just a thought, I very rarely advocate for voter approval rate because it's the maximum you could possibly go to um, without an election essentially. Um, but you can see the difference there in what that could bring in for the city, and, um, like I said, this is still under the current tax rate. So our current tax rate would still be reduced from point two oh.
That's what I was gonna ask, like, so.
It's a one set reduction.
If we went to the one, we prompt the citizens of the point two, whereas the Sunday lawn, let's do that.
No, because we're done, we did it, that year is over. And so now the tax payments are reducing, last year was our biggest year, we don't have another upcoming like balloon, ballooning um, right away, there's another kind of step up that comes in twenty twenty seven, but it's minimal. This was our biggest year.
So what is the, what is the M and O for voter approval?
Um, point one oh, yeah.
Well, and another option is, I mean, we don't really need to, I mean, based on what we've got on our proposed budget, we don't really need to bring in.
And I, I would be opposed to going for maximum, it's just, we can do a balanced budget without squeezing another, like, twenty five thousand.
That's not, it's eleven thousand. It's a little less, it's about ten grand more, ten grand more, and it would fund, you know, what, what down here? Basically, nothing, a city hall renovation, that's it, you know? So you could, you could bump up, we would still be reducing the tax rate, you could fund a city hall renovation at this rate.
You could take out the municipal court.
We can't take that out.
Okay.
We can't continue to commit to, to having a municipal court and then not budget for it, just like it's silly not to budget for grants we know we're gonna apply for. And I do believe that the fix we have on that and putting it down here for transparency sake for citizens is good, but uh, we don't want to, to plan to spend money, we have it put in our budget, because that's kind of a sleight of hand trick, right? That's not okay for residents, right? So.
Yeah, and, and the, and the law is really pretty fuzzy about all that, it says, you know, you do a budget and, and your job is to strictly adhere to the budget unless.
Yeah, not emitted.
You know, yeah, and it's, unless, you know, so it's like, so you gotta be strict, but, you know, when something comes up, you can do a budget, you can do this, you can do that, you know, so, so it's, um, but, you know, as a, as the budget officer, you know, yeah, I wanna, I wanna have a budget, I wanna. As the budget officer, you know, yeah, I wanna, I wanna have a budget, I wanna say, you know what, I'm sorry, you can't do that kind of budget. Or or if you do wanna do that, you know, where's it gonna come from, right? So, so, I mean, that's, that's as good solid management.
Okay, but things like, um, there's areas where we are spending a great deal more. And they're nice things that, but are really necessary, like, our total contractual services. Um, have gone from hundred sixty-five thousand budget of last year to two hundred sixteen thousand.
Where are you?
Okay.
And just five, that's from the forensic, or the accounting, right, even if it's not forensic, the. In-depth, right, we'll call it in-depth. That's a big expense add there.
That thirty?
And, yeah, that's a big add, and that has unanimous council approval. Uh, and discussion, the other big expense is the legal code, code update. Which, again, our lawyer literally sat here and told us we're out of alignment with state code in multiple areas, I don't really think it's. Personally responsible to not take more direct action on that front.
What is the likelihood that we're going to be, um, that we're going to have a new subdivision apply to us?
Heavily like.
Uh, like per lawyer, from the E T J?
No.
From the one five thousand, you know?
Yes.
And so, you wanna spend twenty thousand to prevent that?
We don't.
It's not, it's, it's. So, our code across the board is, is really confusing to contractors. Um, it doesn't align with state code. It also doesn't protect the city in ways that the state has allowed us to protect us, or protect the city. Like, it's really old code.
The city secretary job description is out of line of state code, the board adjustment is out of line of the state code, we reference non-existing code. In regards to penalties and fees, we, um, I mean, that's just off the top of my head, those are big violations. The next round is, yeah, our subdivision code is also out of line of the state code, which is not just our subdivision, it's any kind of. Uh, permit submission regarding plants and development at all, actually, it's all out of line. Um, moving on from there, we have very few of the water quality protections we've frequently talked about, the chapter fifty. That was passed a few years ago, it references, uh, wastewater credits we can't give because we don't own city water. I mean, we're, we're literally hemorrhaging, uh, all kinds of like rights and protections. Because our code is built from a format. Anywhere city Texas, and it, like, in our, in our zoning code alone, it references zones we don't even have. And not projected to have. It's not about survival, it's about what's coming towards us and setting our city up for success.
And success defined as.
Being able to conserve our resources, being able to protect our clean water, being able to prevent overdevelopment and high density development in areas where we don't want it. Right now, there are multiple lots, if you review the Brook Meadow overlay, I produced a citywide review of lot sizes. And it showed multiple lots throughout the city that, under our current code, could be subdivided into smaller lots with multiple houses on them. And that's if you're, if you're willing to do the math, right? And we don't even have the map for lot sizes dedicated in there, so that's a huge oversight.
Yeah, and it's also been, just to speak up a little bit, we're on that topic, um, we created a subcommittee. Who looked at this for well over a year, and there was so much to it, and it was so big, and then. The Texas state government vault changed everything again, even more drastically. And so we all just kind of went, okay, we better pull back and wait to see how the Texas legislature falls out, and then they did, and we're all, there's, they actually threw in. Big question marks on a whole bunch of stuff that were like, whoa, okay, now we have to hand it to the city, we have to hand it to the attorney.
Our agricultural code could be completely off now.
Yeah.
Because that was a huge area that the state of Texas took pretty broad strokes in opening up citizen rights. So we can, we cannot be more restrictive to the state, we don't have the right to do that on that front.
And our code says all this stuff.
You think we will include, increase our density by like twenty percent? Uh, when I reviewed all the extra lots and things, a lot of them are unlikely to be developed.
Well, so what, what we're talking, I'm talking.
Okay, um, that's why. I'm just seeing a lot of money drawn at a potential that may never happen.
This is not, I mean, I, I, if if you're saying, if you're saying that we're putting money towards like the code update. You know, to, you know, stop development or something like that, it's, it's, we're not trying to stop anything, what all we're trying to do is bring our codes. You know, into compliance with the state, which is the law, I mean, that's, we're supposed to do it, but our codes are just out of line. You know, throughout, I mean, zoning subdivision, you know, water quality, you know, all around the the board. And and to to just say, okay, we're gonna do this and try to, you know, put a, put up a firewall between us and the developers. Um, first of all, that's virtually impossible to do, because if you're looking at subdividing the E T J. You know, there ain't gonna be an E T J, you know, so.
It will be that move correct, you know, I mean, like, somebody comes in, wants to put something in there, they just go, okay, I'm not near E T J anymore, there's nothing we can do.
You know, and and, you know, the the general consensus, I mean, I don't have, you know, my Charlie here to back me up, but. You know, when, when I talk to people about legislative action going forward. Um, there's a pretty good chance that in a session or two, there won't be any such thing as an E T J. You know, right now, you can just pull out of it, you know, but there just won't, it just won't exist, you know, not in Texas. You know, Texas is a, is a development state, they wanna, they wanna bring as much people as as possible, what we have to do is have. Have code in place that does protect our resources, you know, it's like, we can, we can do things to protect our, our. You know, our, our law and and our greed, but we can't just say, oh, no, 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 we can make it, we can, we can make, we can incentivize. You know, smart device, we can incentivize, you know, um, you know, one war, we can, we can do a lot of things, but we just can't, I'm sorry, I know what.
You know, and I guess what I'm looking at is.
There's.
Arborist eight thousand, eighteen thousand, um, comprehensive plan update eight thousand, now we're jumping back to twenty thousand. Legal code update, nothing, they're thirty, um. General legal from thirty thousand to forty, uh, we're just, it just seems like some of these big categories.
Well, Charlie, Charlie said that his break, I mean, he did send us his new break, break.
Okay, that was adjusted for his rate increase, the comp plan, that eight thousand isn't related to the comp plan, that was, that's something on an item we didn't intend to use anymore. So that's not a related budget item anymore, and I guess I should have made that note.
What do you mean?
Uh, but there's twenty thousand in it for something. Yes, because we're due for our. Comp at day, comp plan update per the comp plan, so we have to budget for that, we can't just spend that money.
We talked about surveys and and being able to to sort of get some information and and get a, get the comp plan. Uh, I mean, that's, that's, and that's in the, that's in the bill.
Good, good things to do, but. There's so many that are, let's get this done today, let's get it done this year, I'm, I'm just trying to keep our budget. A little more balanced and.
Aren't we only aiming for three thousand dollars?
Uh, yeah, at this point, that's all we are in a.
We jumped the rate, so.
We jumped it quite well.
What?
You seen the maximum to go to?
No, we're not.
No, okay, okay, so going back to this document, understand this again, this is where we're at. Right now, this is what we're currently projecting to spend, and that's what we're pushing. And this would be where we're at with our tax rate, it's right smack in the middle of the new revenue rate. And the voter approval rate, two years ago, this is what we did, we went right in the middle, we almost split the difference. What I was saying is. You can go up to this high, the no, the voter approval rate, you can draw in this amount of money. Without going to an election, and the selling point there is it's still less than we're currently taxing our residents this year. And we can do that exact calculation here, I'll work on that, so you can see exactly how much less. So that's a selling point for that, if we wanna go that way, that's, I'm not saying I support this or I'm against it, what I'm saying is. That we can go to this amount and stop trying to squeeze dry lemons over here, come out of here with a little bit of extra money that we're gonna put down here. To one of these wish list items, now remember, our budget is a wish list, this is where we set out our big goals. Every year, knowing that we're not gonna meet some of them, knowing that we won't spend all of these funds, I have never seen us. In the last three years, overspend our budget, aside from the disaster which doesn't count, right? We, we're not blowing money, like, year after year.
Is this the citizens' wish list, I just wanna make sure that we're not overtaxing and. Just keeping it balanced and, while we're in our election, I don't wanna be seeing it increasing taxes.
But we're, we're not raising taxes, that's the whole point, we're not increasing taxes, this is lower, we're not, we're not increasing taxes of any.
And I would argue that this isn't about the election, this is about our budget, so, but. You know, and and if you haven't actually filed, you should not be announcing things. Um, proceed there, but if you're gonna talk about what our citizens' wish lists are, and we look back at the comp plan. It's walking trail, it's code that protects our trees and our rural community. It's code that protects our water, it's drainage, right, that was, you know, we know that's gonna have to happen. And we're still gonna have to figure out how to pay for that, uh, we cannot not have a bathroom at Creekside, that's against health and sanitation. That's not okay, we have to move forward with having a public facility there sometime, regardless, you know. Even if we keep the porta potty, but if we're gonna keep a porta potty, it can't be by the creek anymore, right, we're just. We're gonna have disaster there, anyway, um, you know, the, the renov, the renovations at city hall. You could argue that's not something citizens support, they've argued against, they've literally said don't multiple times. We also have to understand that our staff have some needs as well, I I mean, I don't, sorry.
To, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Anna, but on that point specifically, um, I was talking to my friend who works at the state of Nebraska, and she handles all. Like, the infrastructure for the state of Nebraska, and I asked her, because they're in a bust mode, meaning the taxes have gotten. Very little, they're barely taking any money in, because everyone's doing poorly in Nebraska, and I thought, well, Wood Creek's actually in a boom right now. Our property values are going up, so, and I asked her, so what would you do during that time period? When you're in a boom, she goes, infrastructure, 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 because you can't bleed a stone when you're in a bust. You can't go back and fix things when you're in a bust, but when you're in a boom, that's when you deal with your infrastructure, you really started messing there. So, to kind of piggyback onto that comment, I think it's time we did some upkeep for this building.
Yeah, the other comments about this rate and, uh, Mayor Whitehead could back me on this one for sure, because they talked about this in previous. Administration discussions, this voter approval rate protects. How much you can charge the next year, if that makes sense, if you don't go to this rate, you lose that little bit of footing. So it keeps your next year's rate capped a little bit lower, right, which, again, I'm not arguing for it. Yeah, explaining how we. How, why this could be appealing, you know what I mean?
And I can't see too well, but is that eleven thousand dollar difference?
Uh, yeah, about, and then, um, I can show you how that's gonna impact like average home things right here, hold on. Uh, but if y'all wanna keep going through this, I just, specifically, if you're looking at our, uh, contractual services. Like, we're talking about why this increased, right, before the last year.
Yeah.
And part of it is oak wilt, we're now trying to manage oak wilt, so we're beefing up our arborists and our, our oak wilt. That's another thing that citizens really want, right, they're, they're wanting us to protect our trees, that's been listed on multiple surveys.
Comprehensive plan, twenty.
Right.
Um, goes at date thirty.
Engineering.
Same, yeah, uh, engineering reversible, up nine thousand.
Maybe so, the mapping numbers.
So that was the thing where it's not.
Yeah, there's just a lot of things, legal elected body, ten thousand, that's where a hundred thousand comes in. These are increases from last year, I'm just seeing if there's, maybe we don't have to do it all next year. Try, and I go back, back to all the assessed value, ten years ago, we collected. And forty-four thousand, twenty-three, we collected three hundred and ten thousand, so people are paying more tax. I'm just trying to.
But that's not your other bus, they're paying more taxes, but it's not that we don't receive the taxes we have.
But we could cut the rate, and all we collect the same amount, maybe we don't, I'm trying to think of lowering people's taxes.
Wait, wait.
Instead of maximizing.
Yeah, uh, that's, this is a big compromise where we're at, um, you know, at this number.
Yeah, I have an area where that I'd like increase. The wealth added for street signs. We did have six thousand, don't you?
Remember, we talked, talked about how a lot of the street signs might already be paid for, because they're in that safety enhancement package. Um, coming from Freeland Turk, so it'll likely be related to, um. A budget amendment and and expendable here, right?
And we have some of the signs already just sitting in the shade.
Correct, yes.
And country lane has no signs since.
That's, that's, but that's this school year, we're gonna do that before October, we're talking about what happens from October one. Until September thirty of twenty twenty-five. Now, so there's a lot that, there's a lot of this year left.
I don't know, so question, it's, if, let's say, a car went on the rampage and knocked down, ran over all our stop signs. The replacement of those stop signs would go into this line item, correct, or would it be under an emergency body here?
That would, that would be, um, an emergency with also probably by insurance claims and. And everything else in.
Or weather.
Interesting.
Well, there was a question, because is a street sign just like, oh, we're planning for a new street sign, or is it a replacement of an existing street sign? So, so like a sign just slowly deteriorated, or the state got really angry at us and said, you have to have stop signs at a breakaway. And you're not doing it, so then.
All the new stop signs, all the new sensitive would go there.
Correct, but let's say the state got really angry, said you have to go, we're getting to replacing them all, this would be the category, right, I'm just asking. Okay, so.
Most likely.
Or, uh, if they were related to the recent road update, the road bond should pay for the breakaway stop signs on all the roads we redid.
But, or somebody just stole the sign because they wanna put it in their den.
They were all at the bottom of the pond, actually, they don't have no reason for that, but, okay, so, uh, if you look at this screen here, this is the kind of. Impact you're talking about, Lina, so you're talking about a, which is a big deal to me, right, I'm, uh. You know, to the penny budgeter in my home, so you're talking about an annual difference. For the average homeowner of that per year.
Ten dollars, and then up to.
I mean, that's a little more than ten dollars, but yeah, we'll say fourteen, right, to regenerate, right, fourteen dollar difference, and then for the city, it brings in eleven thousand difference. Right, versus the low that we could go and bring in the same amount of money we did last year, it's a two dollar difference. And for the city, you're talking about, uh, two thousand dollar difference.
Can you go back to those numbers?
No, I'm sorry.
How come it's lowered for voter?
Yeah, I don't get that.
Oh, it's a negative, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the math not mapping right, let's see. Some C fifteen, yeah, I said.
Yeah, that's not making sense.
So this is the biggest, this is what they paid last year, right, so this is the least reduction in taxes. That's why it's less.
So it's a reduction.
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't hear another.
You're, all, everybody's getting a reduction in taxes, that's happening, because our debt service rate is lower. And our houses are all more valuable. That's happening because our debt service rate is lower and our houses are all more valuable. So those things already trend a tax rate decrease for us without us doing anything.
And so even if it was a voter approval rate, they're still getting lower taxes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what you're, what we're saying here is that, that um on, on line twelve. The four hundred and fifty-three thousand is the. Home value.
Per the county. I did not make that up.
Um and so, and so that person paid nine hundred and six dollars ninety-eight cents to the city. Um in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes.
So if we go with no new revenue, that number goes down to, we still have the same. Of course, the average home value may have gone up.
Well, that's what this is, the projected home value.
Oh, for the, for the down topic. So, so, okay, okay, that makes sense now.
Could you refresh me? Could you refresh me about us on what have we done in the past on this? I can't remember.
On tax rates?
Yes, which rate did we use in the last, so much of the middle?
We, yeah, we, we stayed in the middle.
Did we suck?
We haven't gone up to the voter approval rate ever. I mean, not in, not in our, not in the last three years.
Yeah, and I didn't remember using the no new revenue rate.
Right, so we.
But that doesn't sound terrible.
No, we, we generally stay within a, a couple of, of hundreds of a percent on the, from the no new revenue.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I didn't mean to, I just was curious how we, what the history can know on that. Cause I did not recall ever doing the first.
Well, and honestly, soon it has nothing to do with campaigns. It has to do with, with our, our population. You know, it's like, like we do have quality people on paid incomes. And so they have to, you know, they have strict budgets. And so if we decide, okay, we wanna, you know, we wanna do something pretty big. So we're gonna jack up everybody's taxes a little bit. You know, maybe to us, it doesn't seem that bad. You know, but to, to, you know, somebody down the street, it's just like, that's, that's, you know, a hundred dollars a year that, you know, I have to. Or maybe it's a thousand dollar a year that I, whatever.
But it's just, it's one more thing. It's one more thing.
Yeah. But that's why I say, I mean, we're holding the line on, on our tax rate. And we're actually, actually requiring our, our citizens to pay, you know, a little bit less every year. Which is pretty much what we, we, it went up what, two cents, you know, in order to get the bond. Um everybody's pretty happy with, with that two cent that they're having to pay.
Is this the last year that the uh voter approval rate was used?
What, twenty-one?
Uh unfortunately, this document doesn't show you that for some reason. A, a different letter had was chosen. Some of them show you what the new new rate, no new revenue rate is, but this is the last year that it was, the no new revenue rate. Obviously, there's no, they were dealing with a lot bigger numbers than we are now, um for multiple reasons. Again, the increasing house value, the change in our debt service, um changed all that. Let's see, oh, no, that document's not in here from the agenda packet that year. But it shows the no new revenue rate for that year in that agenda, if I could find it. But that's a long time ago, so I would have to dig for a minute to find that. But that's the last year the no new revenue rate was used. Or not, sorry, not new, uh voter approval rate. That's the last year the voter approval rate was used. Uh we have not used a no new revenue rate and maybe it's part factors I've looked, to be honest.
Yeah, it always, you know, it's always said, okay, well, we wanna, we don't want people to pay more than they're paying now. Um, you know, but, you know, a couple of extra bucks and the budget's not gonna hurt. You know, we need, we need some, we need a little like the money.
Well, also for, for my thinking is if we're doing these, like we're really planning ahead. And we're really seriously concerned about considering these sinking funds. That we start talking about road maintenance, you know, the ten-year plan. We start saving up now, so we create the sinking fund. I'm not objecting to that voter approval rate because that gives us the option, like everyone was saying earlier is. What happened is every time we get a little lower on our tax rate, this, the county, state or county, county calculates a little lower for us the next year. So what we're doing is we're ending up pulling way back. And then we're not being able to save for these, like.
Yeah, but, but, you know, so, so what we're talking about with a sinking fund is using monies appropriately that were not spent out of the budget and holding on to it. So the budget to create surplus um is not a good.
That's not what I'm saying.
But it is actually what you're saying.
No.
But that, but I'm sorry, but I mean, that's how I, I'm sorry.
Cause what I'm doing is we're, we're cutting those very budgets on the, the budget. So there's nothing, like if we end up using some, there's nothing actually to sink.
What, what, what specifically are we cutting that would be used in a sinking? Not just, but not just save, it's also missing. Well, my understanding of sinking fund is that, oh, you know what? You know, we put this money aside, but we didn't use it. You know, we don't wanna lose it. You know, so let's put, you know, five hundred of that, you know, into the sinking fund that we've established in Fundview. For, you know, whatever the project is. And then, and then, you know, we've got it carrying forwards. But to, but to, you know, set the tax rate in order to have enough of a surplus to create sinking fund? That's, that's what I'm getting at.
That's not what I'm trying, I'm thinking about the fact that if we go with these, if we're cutting the budget because of our tax rate. Then those line items shrink. So it gives us less room to use, like. So when we come to a project, we go, oh, I don't know if you use it because now we're not, we're not saving. Right? So like, we're delaying our own ability to supply the things that the citizens have asked us for.
I mean, this budget to me um responds nicely to what the citizen would ask.
I agree. I just don't.
I, I don't have to explain. All we, all we really have to find is, is less than four thousand dollars to have a valid budget. You know, that's not, that's not taking an axe to anything. That's, that's, you know, a thousand dollars here, five hundred dollars here and it's done.
I gotta be honest, I, I don't know if I caught all the edits that y'all suggested. Um so I believe I missed something here with the landscaping and mowing. But not changing the amount.
But not changing the amount. It's just, it's just losing mowing entirely and moving that. We moved that seven thousand in for landscape maintenance, making that landscape maintenance budget twelve thousand. The mowing budget that, that is in here was seven thousand dollars. The landscape maintenance budget was five.
Okay.
They gathered together to twelve.
So you're combining those two not. And leaving green space stuff.
Well, with the idea that the green space maintenance is, is designed more for beautification projects. You know, I mean, there's an argument to put it in landscaping, but it's part of landscaping. But I mean, if you do have a separate line item for green space maintenance that is, that is earmarked for beautification. Then, you know, hopefully we'll spend that on beautification.
Should we just call it beautification? Are we allowed to change the name?
You can call whatever we want.
Put a slash there and say that, call it green space maintenance, slide beautification project. That way it's clear. Or favor.
So part of this is we can do whatever we want on these documents. The real, the reality is, is whoever our accountant is needs to adjust the names of these items moving forward, which can be done, you know, common did it.
Yes, that's.
And the big important thing is getting rid of all of these extra code lines that we don't use. Streamlining the code lines, because that's what's really important, right? That's when we, we write a check, it's associated with a code line. That comes back and that's how we make these.
Does that come in as an administrative function or does that come in?
It's administrative. It's administrative, but honestly, council members in the future, it would be really good if we always. If we, if we could tie in anything we proposed or specific budget line item. We tried to do that for a long time and then our budget document went up for a while, so that became very hard. And it became difficult to coordinate. Yeah, so, uh but we do need to keep that in mind moving forward. Specifically when you're repping your advisory boards, that if they're asking for money, we make sure we're pulling it from the right places, um not to Target Park specifically because I don't believe it was anybody's specific problem that this happened. But, you know, special events at some point weren't coming out of their budget anymore, even though that's what we were budgeting for. And that kind of stuff, we wanna try to avoid and clean up, you know, make sure we're going to. Uh so, so y'all didn't change any more money except for we moved the grant matches down here because it's a wishlist item that may or may not happen. And we um adjusted the civic plus number, correct?
Yeah. So let's take, take, okay, so I'm looking at community relations. You know, we bumped that from seven thousand to eleven thousand, split the difference on that. Um, you know, make it nine thousand because some of, the reason that we did that was that, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep doing things like the Fourth of July celebration, right? So, and that just cost us money. Um but, but I asked all of two people for sponsorship dollars, two people.
Yeah.
And I got almost twice what we had for the budget. You know, so, so people wanna sponsor them, they wanna put their name on it. So I, I think that we can count on sponsorship to cover that and cut that down to nine thousand. That gives a couple thousand back.
Okay.
We need another fifteen hundred.
I'm gonna take it out of your salary. Well, you got fourteen ninety-nine. You know, and, and, you know, there's a couple of things that we just. We just don't know what it's gonna cost. We don't know what, what it's not bringing us a plan of, whether it's gonna be, you know, eighteen thousand, twenty-two thousand. Um, so.
And municipal court, I wouldn't pick on again.
Well, why don't we?
Estimated six thousand last year. This year, we estimated five thousand for each other. It's the law.
We haven't started dying, but. But it, it, one of the things that, I mean, if you really wanna, um, you know, go back into some of the, there's been some very pointed um discussion about, about bringing a municipal court in line. Especially involves uh planning and zoning issues. I mean, you can't, like, like we can have all the ordinance of the world, we can't, we can't, um, we can't, we can't enforce them. We can't enforce our ordinances because we don't have a municipal court. We can't take them to court. We, we have to take them to district court and spend the jillions of dollars.
And before you ask, yes, we have residents pushing the line repetitively, though, yes.
And not only that, but.
All I'm saying is there are estimates and estimates, you know.
Uh can I make a quick suggestion?
Yeah.
I'd like to drop green space maintenance down to three grand because like looking at like the Triangle project, that's about three grand. The project at Parkview was three grand before the parking space, but we don't really need to install more parking spaces anywhere. For example, like Veterans Pool, Mario Plaza already has them. The other park that's across the street already has them. The Triangle, we're not gonna probably try to install parking spaces there um anytime soon. The Creekside has them, Augusta has them. So, you know, this project, if, if anything happened, we don't even have anything proposed or anything in plan. And anything that would in theory be here would, like the biggest thing we need right now is tree care. So that would be under the arborist, you know what I mean? And, or tree maintenance.
We're saying five thousand, three thousand for beautification first.
I think that's reasonable because that's, that's the biggest amount we've ever really systematically spent. And guess what? Where this, you know, um this number actually appears, actually two twelve. So look, we made it. Look at that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you. It's actually put the number in.
Got it. That, oh, now we're positive. This is green now.
All right, remember, you're lucky. Let's go back in here while.
Green. Oh, that's not the right color, green. Zero. I don't know how to make, hold on. How do I show this?
Balance budget. Where do we put three hundred and twenty-seven?
Oh, my gosh, no.
Exactly the easiest, easiest thing to do. You can choose where you wanna put it, doesn't matter.
Three twenty-seven, municipal board.
Yeah, they could have a business one, yes.
Yeah, what refreshments for citizens.
Right here.
Yeah, we have a lot of gunheads.
That's care, area of care, right?
Oh, that's not fun. Check it out. This computer, I have a hard time.
Anybody, communities, where's that community for?
You know, this is, this is a budget thing, but it's this year's budget item. I mean, I, I wrote down and asked Pappy to get me a wireless mouse and keyboard for the new computer. But it's, it's a little, it's a little touchy. Um so if you would like to do that, I mean, it'll be a CD expense and it will belong to your computer. But um you can ask Pappy to do that. I mean, it's like for the. Or, or, you know, forty seven dollars, it's money well spent.
Oh, look at that.
Did he find out anything on the, from the state?
Nine.
On our calendar.
Yeah, that's still our due date. We're trying to figure out the.
Okay, still, but we, we need to post.
Yes.
Friday.
Yes.
Okay.
And the cover page um for the proposed, you only need to do a cover page if the budget will raise more revenue.
It, it's ready. All the numbers are ready except for this percent.
That's this one.
And you have to forgive me, but I'm not gonna try to calculate this percent on my own right now. Cause I gotta look up the math again. So that's one of y'all remembers how to do that number. How do you calculate a percent difference between two very large numbers?
You take.
You divide them, right?
And, and subtract the second number and then you divide that number of results by the old number.
So.
So that's a percentage change.
So I take this first, this uh no new revenue one? Wait, I take how much this one brings in and subtract how much this one brings in?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then that resulting number. You divide by the first number.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And remember when the county actually gives us their official document, some of this will shift, right?
Yeah, this is, this is a posting for the proposed budget.
Yeah.
On July twenty-fifth, no later than July twenty-fifth, we get the numbers from the county. Which could change this, probably not significantly, but it could change it some. So July twenty-fifth, you know, we'll have a circle. And, and so some of these numbers are gonna change and we may have to make a couple of little changes. But that will be our, our, not our adopted budget, but our um plan is still be proposed. But then once we get all the tax rates set and go through all the fellow hearing and everything else, then we adopt the budget. Um we can't adopt the tax rate in the budget at the same time. You have to, have to, do the budget hearing. You can adopt the budget, then even if you do it the next day, you can do the tax rate. Um the tax rate and the.
All right, I have one question, Linnea. What do I do with that number?
Um you divide that number by the first number.
The bigger number?
Just the first one. So you're going to change from the no new revenue.
And then what do I do with that? That's the percent change? Point zero five, three. No, that's not a percent though. Is that, whoa, okay.
Point zero five, so it's, it's like five hundred of a percent.
Yeah, that's not normal. Usually it's.
Last time it was like.
I know, it was, well, yeah, well, something's wrong. That's not my, oh, maybe I timed it. Hmm, no, that's, that's point oh five three is what it says changed. It's not a big change. I guess I could do.
Well, you can also, you can also do, do, do the three sixty-three, seven eighty-nine number plus oh five three percent and see what that does.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
One night, so. The kingdom counting my work.
I thought the point ten of a percent.
Four tenths of a percent, so four hundred.
There's twelve, you're around three nine.
Yeah, zero zero three nine.
It is very small.
Point zero zero three nine.
Yeah.
When we're talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
No, it's.
And the difference is, is less than two thousand is a small number.
Not even a half percent, though.
That did not produce that number. I mean, there's only a three hundred fifty-six dollar difference between the two.
How many?
What did I do?
Three thousand. No, no.
Between this, this rate and this rate, what they generate is a three hundred fifty-six dollar difference.
So where are the numbers?
What do you mean, what numbers? This is just the M and L, this is not the debts are included.
Uh, but I, I don't know where you're getting three hundred dollars.
Because this total.
The eight, seven, eighteen seventy-one?
And this number here only produce a three hundred.
Oh, 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 I see, you're doing, you're doing the, okay.
With those big numbers, you can get rounding errors.
And then this new property number, that I think I have to use that one thing and calculate, I don't know, man, okay. Anyway, I think we can take a day to work on this form, even though, because basically all we vote to approve is the numbers that fill this out. Does that make sense?
So we don't vote.
No, but we have to collectively approve of the proposed budget, which is what dictates these. Does that make sense? So it is a vote.
Thank you.
To approve the approved, proposed budget for voting, yes.
Ready?
I don't, I mean, I don't know, are y'all ready? You feel ready? Yeah.
I move that we, that we approve.
We have to exit workshop, sorry.
Oh, okay. There's nothing on the agenda.
Oh, no.
Because we said in the last meeting, though, that we would, we would post the, the proposed budget with any amendments from the workshop, so we've already, we've already said that we would approve it based on, on any amendment that. That's.
Y'all vote coffee?
Yeah, because there's no action item on this agenda.
But, did you, uh, you just reviewed the minutes from stuff being great?
Yes, we did. They're back there.
What does it say?
It, it says we approved the last.
Yeah, I know, so this meeting caught me off guard, I thought we were um, so, and also that's like Krista's not here, because she, she didn't anticipate this meeting. When I left the last meeting, I thought we all felt pretty good about the proposed budget, I didn't realize.
We did, felt good about the proposed budget, we were just gonna see if we could fund four thousand bucks, right? And so that was, that was the deal, we voted to approve the proposed budget with, with any amendments based upon this workshop.
Want to read our shoulder? With the two, the, I give me six, put them all on there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our motion allowed that we could make the changes today.
Well, if it can't, then we can't make our decision.
Well, then we have to submit.
We post the other one.
Yeah, we submit the other one, the one we've, that we showed up with.
And just keep the, knowing that we intend to eventually move in this direction.
Yeah, but I remember us talking about, about.
That was certainly.
A proposal proposed budget with, with amendments from workshop.
It's slow, I think it's what.
That's what I said, I think, when we were talking about that workshop.
No, I, I told you that we would have time to go home, look at what we've done, review.
We have the workshop, we have the, remember, we had the workshop.
Yeah.
So we got all the numbers in, we had an action item on the council meeting, and on the action item on the council meeting, we approved the proposed budget with any amendments and other work. That's amended from the workshop.
Duck it.
Yeah.
Just up a little.
I don't like my mouse either.
So the motion was, motion was made by Mayor Kurtin Heinz to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five and direct staff to post on the city website before July twenty deadline for such postings, Hamburg seconded, the amended motion was made by Councilman Hamburg to amend the budget with all the things that we have just spoken about and move forward with this new budget amount of twenty-three, so we have to post the old, the old budget.
Okay, so we post the old budget, we've got the new budget ready to go, we can put that on the next agenda, um, for an update, but.
There's nothing said, I'm so sorry, Dan, I just had a thought in my brain. There's nothing that says that when you propose, when you post that one we approved last week, that you don't also post this, and it says latest update, does that make sense? Do they know that we met and we've got, we've already adjusted it some, you know, so I don't think there's anything wrong.
Sure.
By the way, if anybody's confused.
And so we're sending, we're sending to the.
Yes.
We're sending to the county the one we learned on last meeting.
The one that's in your packet is what will.
Be sent.
Go, sorry, go to the county, and we'll put the right cover page on it with the appropriate numbers of linked to that, and that's all just math, it's not, you know, special. And then we will also post this and just say latest update for this workshop. And it's not ideal, but, you know, there we are.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I thought, I would, I would make sure we had an action item, go to another workshop and, and go, go to meeting and, and have an action item on it, but I thought that we had said that, you know, that we, that here.
Yeah, it just, the language was very specific to this, that's fine, yeah.
Bye, Dan.
This is, it's a good, it's a good company, and the other, the other thing too is, we will have, we will have something posted that's a zero balanced budget, so that's, that's good, um, by the time, no, maybe by the time, well, it's not, the timing's gonna be that. I was gonna say, but we'll get the, we'll get the figures from the county on the twenty-fifth, on or about the twenty-fifth, and so, you know, we could vote this new one at the time, but I think that when we get to the twenty-fifth, this we're gonna have to change it again anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, last year, last, a couple of years ago, when we were navigating this without a city manager, these numbers adjusted, granted, I, I do understand how to do it better now, because what I wasn't doing was taking out this number before. So the no new revenue rate is calculated with this number minus the, a new bill. Why, I couldn't possibly try to explain eloquently right now, but it has to do with something with how, like, you don't want to account it because they just built it and then it won't be above a month, right? So, uh, and what we also haven't been able to know from the county is any, like, what always happens is delinquent taxes or unpaid taxes, right? And so we don't even know that until they send us all their forms, right? But that, but last time, these numbers only changed in the like one hundred percent marker, so it was not, we're not gonna get a big surprise.
I need to add something.
Oh, why?
Well, I mean, um, I just want to remind you, I, I don't know that everybody knows or remembers, but I have a vacation scheduled, been on the books for a while, um, and we leave, uh, for Montana on the twenty-eighth, next Saturday. Um, we're in Glacier for five days, and the word I have is that there is no gun. There are no internet, there are no nothing, so I'm gonna be off the grid for those five days, the mayor, Tim, is going to be in charge, um, Linnea is going to keep working on, on budget items. So, um, I don't, when I, when I come out of the dead zone, I'm sure my phone will blow up. Um, and I am going to a friend's house in Washington for a couple of days that will have internet, um, and I'll try to catch up to the best I can, but if there are things that need to be signed or, or whatever, you know, say, you know, this, well, you know, if, we have a DocuSign account, I think, right? So, I mean, if we can, you know, sign by DocuSign or wherever, if anything like that while I'm gone. Um, but we have, you know, we have Mayor Kurtin as acting mayor, um, we, we should be covered, but it does worry me though, I'm gonna get a little sick. It has a, I have, I get a little, a little sick feeling in my stomach, you know, just being off the grid for even thirty minutes, you know, much less.
Think we could get by a day.
No, 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 when I get there, you know, it's gonna be different, but it does, it does concern me so much, so I just wanted to let everybody know that that, uh, you know, I, I mean, I, as far as I'm concerned, you're in really, really, really capable hands.
That sounds better, thank you.
But, yeah, in fact, you're better than, you're better than, with, with fog, most likely, then, for me being here, anyway, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
You have a test for that first week in August?
I'm back on the eighth.
Back on the eighth of August?
Mm-hmm, and I think, um, I think our first meeting is on the eleventh or twelfth or something in August.
A regular meeting, yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
I'll be on vacation the second week, but it'll be fast.
Second week of August.
We're way off topic here, but, um.
Well, I was saying about, uh, basically, of budget preparation and, and approval and going through the process, because there are strict, strict timelines for the process, you know, you know, posting it, you know, budget hearing, you know, all of that stuff has to happen and has to happen according to the stated timeline. You know, so, so we're, we're very cognizant of that, it's not, it's not our birthday, as far as budgeting goes, um, but, um, but it is and I don't count the form, so, you know, if you have to have a, if you have to have even a special meeting, you can call a special meeting, you know, without you know, and as long as you can get four of y'all here, you're fine, because the mayor, Kurtin, was voted in that situation.
Did y'all have a preference on these forms? I, I kinda like this one, it has the most information on it.
It, it all depending on what it said up here.
Yeah.
We're not gonna raise less revenue from property taxes than last year, so this one, this one's happy.
Yeah.
That is.
And this one has, I like it whenever they have the, all of the red rates down here personally.
Well, that's the only one we can use, we're not raising the same amount of revenue from property taxes, that's what this one said.
I know.
This one said less, that we're not raising less, we're not raising, um, we're not raising less, we're not raising the same, we're raising a little bit more.
Right.
So we have to use that one.
Yeah, I'm just saying, some, you don't have to include all of this, but I'm advocating that we do.
Yeah.
Me too.
This is what we got. You got a new something, you need this?
I do, there's another map, something's wrong with that map, I have to look at that one, I, or I have to think about it for a second, and I can't do it on the spot, I'm sorry.
All right, um, anything, we're good? We're in agreement? All right, then, uh, we're determined, it is, uh, voting to a term.
So we?
Uh, we're in a term and it is five twenty-five.